Good morning, everybody. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
A prayer for today. Father, thank you for the fresh grace and a wheatful promise. Lead me in your ways and fill my heart with your love and joy. Help me to see others as you see them. Father, I ask that you guide every decision, response, effort, and conversation I have. All for your glory, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Linda, let us start us out.
Sure. On April 23rd, I approved a liquor license. We've concurred with the Claret and Township Trustees in not requesting a hearing on a liquor license being requested by Sonia Retail LLC, DBA Country Style Drive Inn located at 15052 Mayfield Road, Hansburg, Ohio, On April 28th, for community and economic development, I approved and executed the notice to proceed for Lindsay Construction and Design Incorporated for the Maple Leaf Community Residents' Roof and Window Replacement Project for three homes under Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Grant Number BF231AZ1. And for water resources, I approved and executed the service contract agreement with Utility Service Company Incorporated to perform visual condition assessment of water tower tanks for a period of one year to be effective April 28th, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $2,400. On April 25th, I approved an appropriation transfer from JFS to move needed funds within public assistance to open an encumbrance by the end of the month. I also approved an $800,000 voucher from the Commissioner's Office to the Geauga County Airport Authority for 2025 financial support, providing a portion of the funding necessary for the authority to construct new teehangers.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Adrian Gordon, Commissioner's Office. So today's financials include travel encumbrances from the Common Police Court to attend the 2025 Ohio Common Please Judges Association Summer Conference, from Job and Family Services for an overnight stay required to interview an out-of-state suspect, and from the Probate Court to attend the Ohio Association of Probate Juvenile and Domestic Relations Judges Annual Summer Conference. Among the vouchers is $13,598 from the Department on Aging to Dex Imaging LLC for two replacement copiers, one at the Shartan Senior Center and one at the West Geauga Senior Center; $532,136 from the Commissioners to Corsa, which is the county risk-sharing authority, for the 2025 property and liability insurance premium, which had gone up a little over $61,000 from last year; and $898,605.10 from the Commissioner's Office to Infinity Construction Company for pay request number 19 of the courthouse expansion project; and then revenue certifications from the Common Police Court in their new One Ohio Foundation Grant Fund for additional state revenue; and from the Engineers' Office for additional transfers in revenue not originally budgeted for 2025.
Do we know who from the Probate Court is attending the Ohio Association of Probate Juvenile and Domestic Relations Judge?
I believe that's Judge Grandal.
Okay, interesting. And where are we with the, as far as the courthouse, how much are we paid so far with this 19th?
If the payroll request is up there.
In here?
Yeah.
If it's not, that's okay. I was just curious where we're at.
I can't remember. That wasn't the total from the last.
Or they might not have.
Well.
Yeah, the payment would have already, I can get that for you after session. I'm not sure exactly what the percentage is right now.
Yeah, I was just curious. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the financials that's presented.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
And then the next item on the agenda, number four, is the Commissioner's Office requesting the Board approve an amendment to the 2026 tax budget hearing schedule, switching time slots for water resources and community economic development on Thursday, May 8th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
And then number five, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute Amendment 02 to Services Agreement with Maximus U.S. Services, extending the contract to perform services rendered in the development of the county's central services cost allocation plan through February 28th, 2026, in the amount of $13,000.
Adrian, how do, like, I've looked at the Maximus books, but like, how do we use that data in the county?
So, in order to get federal funds for certain departments, there has to be a, according to the federal regulations, there has to be some sort of cost allocation plan that allocates county costs to those departments. So, we use Maximus there, the county CCAO authorized consultant that produces and makes these plans for counties to do that. So, once a year, I send them the previous year's payments, payroll data. There's probably about three or four different reports that I send them. They then, in an Excel spreadsheet, and then they take that and they plug it into their system, their whatever they've made to allocate on that. Yeah, we've given them all kinds of parameters for the different things in the county, and then they produce that booklet that we get, that they allocate all those costs to. And some departments, we allocate only a portion of it, like the Engineers only pay the, for the insurance part of it. Some departments pay twice a year, some pay every quarter. So, there's different methodologies behind it, and I can always have tape from Maximus come in and kind of do a refresher for everybody on what they do and how they do it, in case we need to, you know, tweak it or do something different. But it is a requirement by the federal government to receive federal funds to have a cost allocation program, and that's what this fulfills.
And that's the total for the whole year, so only 13 grand?
Correct, yes.
That seems like a bargain.
It is, it is, because it's a very complex formula that it goes through in order to create those. And Maximus has been doing it for us for a number of different years. The Prosecutor's Office has indicated that they would like us to go out and bid that out to other consulting firms. So, we'll be looking to do that potentially for next year.
Has the cost come up a little bit since last year?
It used to be $11,000 pretty consistently since I've been here, and two years ago, the cost went up to $13,000.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve five.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Megan Erickson from the Commissioner's Office. Item number six, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the agreement with Obuntu Wellness LLC to provide two chair massages stations on May 8th, 2025, during the Employee Health and Wellness Expo, at a cost of $120 per chair, per massage chair therapist, for the total sum not to exceed $1,200. This will be covered by the SEPCO Wellness Grant.
Megan, what's the total amount of that grant? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Okay, and then item number seven, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the agreement with Smooth Rider LLC to provide a maximum of 220-ounce smoothies at a cost of $10 per smoothie via the Smooth Rider Smoothie Food Truck on May 8th, 2025, during the Employee Health and Wellness Expo, for a total number of smoothies not to exceed 400 and not to exceed the amount of $4,000. This will be covered by the SEPCO Wellness Grant.
But it's a minimum of 200, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve seven.
Second.
Commissioner Spudler?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Thank you.
I had one of those smoothies last year.
$10 bucks? Wow, that are big, man. Are they? Like, a whole meal?
I'm Melanie Glassman, I'm the President and CEO of Lake Joga Recovery Centers.
Good morning, Charles Tong, Lake Joga Recovery Centers.
So, thanks for allowing us to be on the agenda today. This is our annual update as far as the jail treatment program, and then just wanted to bring your attention to some other new things that have developed. I don't want to take all the time to go through this, but I'll point out a few things on the report. The very first page shows the utilization. And in gray, it's through December 31st, that's mid-year for fiscal year '25. So, we're, those are mid-year numbers there for Geoga Jail Treatment utilization. And then the next page is just breakdown by gender. The third graph is Geauga Jail Treatment Program completion, which should not be a surprise, because we have a captive audience there, so pretty much treatment completion will be in the 90 percentile, which it is. We do like to always benchmark ourselves with state or national numbers as best we can. In this case, we look at the Lake County Jail Treatment Program, and the numbers are very consistent with treatment completion for intensive outpatient in a jail setting. And the next page then is the Shartan JTP Aftercare Program, and you can see treatment completion for that on the second half of that page. Again, looking at national statistics, we've always surpassed national stats for treatment completion and follow-up.
Melanie, before you go on, so tell me what the aftercare program involves. Is that an inpatient?
No, aftercare would be once they're released from jail, then aftercare would be one night a week. So, for some, for some individuals, that's a pretty abrupt change to go from incarcerated, say, to one night a week. So, some will go from IOP in the jail to an outpatient IOP level, which would be three times a week. Some, they find they need a higher level of care, so they might go to one of our residential treatment programs. So, the fact that we offer the full continuum of care, we can meet whatever each individual's needs are once they leave jail. And then there's the treatment completion rates for aftercare, which would be the, you know, just specific to the JTP aftercare folks. And then we also do six-month and 12-month follow-ups. We do that for the, well, for the Geoga Jail Treatment Program and also for our residential treatment programs. So, we look at how many have relapsed, how many were sober at the time we contacted them. Maybe they relapsed, but they got back in recovery and they were sober at the time of contact, and how many rearrests there were. So, that's what that chart shows. And I have to apologize, the next chart, I'm thinking maybe this is last year's because I'm going to look and I'm going to, I'll send it back to you maybe with an update, but because we have a number that go from jail treatment to residential treatment, we always like to include that chart also. So, this is showing fiscal year '24, so that may be incorrect. So, I'll get you an updated, which we showed fiscal year '23, '24, and then half-year for fiscal year '25. But again, if you look at our completion rates compared to what we are able to get from SAMSA, which is a substance abuse mental health services administration, would give us some national statistics, showing 41% completion, whereas Lake Joga Recovery Centers are 66%. And then the six and the 12-month follow-up after residential treatment, really right on target with the national number, which we were able to obtain from Journal of Psychiatry. And then the 12-month follow-up, quite a bit exceeds the 42% versus 56% at Lake Joga Recovery Centers. And then our goals for fiscal '25 is the last page. We do have peer recovery support, and they have been providing services in the jails, so that adds additional support for individuals there, so that's been very beneficial. We want to increase the utilization of the jail aftercare program, expand the Shartan outpatient, which we already have done. We now have our dual intensive outpatient program there and additional mental health services at our outpatient office, and then expand recovery housing. We did receive the One Ohio Grant, which we are very grateful for, to open a recovery house in Region 13. And we were very close last week. We had found a house that was perfect for us, but after going back a second time, wasn't so perfect. It needed more money as far as repairs and a roof and a new furnace. So, there were a couple other drawbacks, but unfortunately, inventory is very low right now. So, we'll keep looking.
Where are you looking to have, to locate that ideally?
Well, Geoga County. I mean, it's Region 13 specific, but we already operate five recovery houses in Lake, and so we have two in Geoga. So, we would be looking Geoga County.
So, the next house purchase will be in Geoga County?
Yeah.
But you don't have, you're not specifically looking at Shartan or Middlefield, or you're just seeing what's available and going from there?
We were looking Shartan and Middlefield, but just saw something in Chesterlin, so I, you know, we're not ruling out anything. And again, the inventory is so low that we'll look at anything that'll meet our needs. And, you know, the way our recovery houses are designed, there are five unrelated adults and a house manager. So, we really don't want them to be any bigger than that, because it feels more like a family that way. And it feels more like a home-like setting, so. But to find a house that has at least four bedrooms is, that's a challenge too. I think we got scared off with this last one. It was, it was a big piece of property, had a pond, and it would just be a lot of maintenance and a lot of costs for us. Like I said, that we needed a roof and a furnace, and so things started mounting up. But I'm sure we'll find one. It just, I think we have until April of 2026 to use those funds. So, I feel pretty confident in that time we'll definitely find something.
Maybe the market will turn around by, frankly.
Are you trying to focus on a house, a residential unit that has utilities, like water, sewer? Is that bigger, like 20, 25?
Not in Geoga County. I would like that, but I think what we're looking at, we're finding it that there's wells and septic and that, so. Was that your question?
Yes.
Yeah. If it has electricity, I guess we're all good. But we've come to learn to live with a septic and the well at Twelve Meadows, our women's facility in Monce. So, that was our first experience, so we've learned how to work with that, so.
Now, with, do you have, with this, do you have stats that how many people have dual diagnosis with mental illness and abuse?
I wouldn't have that rate with me, but I can get that. For what period of time are you?
Just the latest last year, whatever.
Okay.
If I'm hearing, it's around 80% with dual diagnosis, and then if I had some numbers, I could.
Yeah, that sounds very high to me, but then, I think sometimes it's so difficult to tease out in the beginning, because people come in with a substance use disorder, and they have a lot of behaviors that look like a mental health disorder. And so, once you get them off drugs and alcohol, and they have a period of time that they can be completely drug-free, then you can start ruling out other things. But then we have the reverse, that people who have severe mental health issues, they are learning to control their symptoms with drugs or alcohol, so, you know.
Yeah, self-medicating essentially, right?
So, it's difficult to say in the very beginning, probably a lot of them have their dual diagnoses because of their use. So, but I can give you what's been reported to us as far as our current clientele, like this past fiscal year, with that.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
All right. So, looking at the six-month follow-up, it looks like relapse went up a lot for fiscal year '24.
You're looking at the jail treatment follow-up?
Yeah.
So, that was, that was one thing I were going to talk about today. With so many people having an opiate use disorder, one of the services that Lake Joga Recovery Centers provides is medication-assisted treatment, and those are medications to help with withdrawal and cravings. The goal is not to keep them on for life just for a period of time through, and then they will meet with the nurse to determine when they come off those medications. So, we have been tracking this and more recently have been providing medication-assisted treatment in the jail, because there is such a high propensity for relapse once they get out of that confined setting. We did have money through SaaS grant, the state opiate stimulant, state opiate and stimulant response grant, and we have had that for a number of years, but they did it very different this year. We were able to use those funds to purchase the medication, which is very expensive. This year, for the SaaS 4.0, rather than funding programs fully, they funded everybody at 50%. So, we have pretty much gone through our allocation for the medication-assisted treatment in the jail. And I had a conversation with Lieutenant Rose about that to see if there were any other resources that they had to provide medication for people with opiate use disorder. And they have a grant that they applied for and have been receiving for five years, which is specific to psychotropic meds for people with mental health disorder, but not to cover medication-assisted treatment medications. So, I asked her if this is a service she'd like us to continue, and she liked, she said almost definitely. So, she's supportive of Lake Joga Recovery Centers continuing to do it. We just don't have the funds anymore, and Charles has the exact numbers to, but you know where we are currently in. That, while let you talk about that.
Sure. So, the SaaS grant goes from October 1st to September 30th. And the projection is that through September 30th, we would have a deficit, based on the current need, we would have a deficit of approximately $34,000. We did put in our RFP with Geoga Board for 8,800 of that. That leaves approximately $25,115 in funding that we still need. The shots are $2,181.34 per stomachache shot. So, we were inquiring, you know, if we had 12 of these shots, that would be $26,176. Are there any opiate settlement funds that the county received that would be available to assist us to this degree? Because all the, all the clients in the jail, that's the disorder that they have.
I think so far, so far, it's around $300,000 that our prosecutor, Jim Flies, has either partnered up with other counties and went after Walgreens and some others, and we're about $300,000 that we have for opioid funds. So, I, you know, I think we'd like to look into that, the chain, and that's what the money's for.
Okay, that'll be great.
Your question about the relapse and commissioner, we will track that, so hopefully that will help prevent relapse when people are discharged.
Okay, so you feel that's the correlation there?
I think that's a big part of it.
Is a decrease in the funding for these shots?
As far as the increased demand, or?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it just looks like for fiscal year '23, you had a 24% relapse, and then fiscal year '24, it went up to 47. So, it's almost doubled.
Yeah.
Weight of relapse. But I mean, I didn't know if that was hopefully less people have to go through the program, or, you know, another reason to explain the discrepancy.
I don't have a good explanation for why the big spike. You can see that the rearrest went down though, so, which is interesting.
Well, no, and the sobriety went up as well. I mean, so that's kind of an interesting.
So, like I said, that relapse and then sober, sober means at contact. So, perhaps during that six-month, they relapsed, and then they're back in recovery. And so, that's why, you know, that number would be quite different than a relapse. But good that that many people got back in recovery after they relapsed.
No, that's right.
But if we can prevent relapse altogether, and the medications are, you know, obviously, they would continue. obviously, they would continue on those medications after they're released from jail, but our nurse has been giving like one or two shots while they're in the jail, and, and I, I think that, that's been beneficial for those with opiate use disorder.
I, I should have mentioned, so obviously, the RFP was with Joga Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services, I should specify that.
The RFP for what, I'm sorry?
Uh, for the other eighty-eight hundred.
Okay.
Towards that.
Okay, very good.
Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services. And then the other part of our ask for today was just to continue funding the jail treatment at the same amount as the previous year, which was forty-six thousand, three fifty-eight.
But you're seeking, what, eighty-eight hundred dollars from Board of Mental Health?
Correct.
When will you have an answer for that?
I, I would think before June thirtieth.
And that, those are state fiscal years, so that's in sort of July one.
And what was the number that you're seeking that you're a little short, twenty-five thousand something?
Uh, well, overall, thirty-four thousand, so eighty-eight hundred through the Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services, and then what's left over is twenty-six thousand, one seventy-six.
And Adrian, I was correct, we have about three hundred thousand dollars from the opioid funds?
Actually, it, it has gone up recently due to some additional settlements that have come in, so we're up to just a hair over five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars right now.
Oh, wow.
It, it jumped up since the last time I.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Due to about three, four months ago.
Yeah.
And do we have a plan for any of that?
It's set aside just for things like this.
Correct.
Okay, so we just need people to come into us?
Yeah, we, we need plans, yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, maybe we should be advertising that we have this money and we need to give it away.
Oh, there's, there's, there's people that, you know, in, in my circle that, they talk to me verbally, so.
I just want to make sure that everyone that may be doing a work while program has the opportunity to, to ask for something.
And I agree with you.
But that's good to know, I mean, it seems like we, we have money to fund your project.
Yeah, it seems like we spend a little bit and then we get a little bit, and so, and then we've gotten some, some additional ones the last couple of years, so, and even in, in just the last couple of months, so it's, the, the totals jumped back up again, so.
Well, I think it's appropriate for me to make a motion to, uh, transfer money from the opioid fund to Joga Community, Lake Joga Recovery Centers for funds, twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, because that's what the money's for.
And then their normal, their normal.
Their normal, forty-six, three fifty-eight for the jail.
I'll stop at that. Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Should I break in?
Aye.
Yes.
Christine, do you need me to email you?
If you email me, then I can get it to Adrian, and then he can do what he needs to do with the money.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks for coming in.
Morning, Tracy.
Tracy Sokowicz, Engineer's Office. Item nine on the agenda, the county engineer's office is requesting the board release the thirty-three percent maximum load limit reduction on all county highways and township roads to be effective April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
I feel like you're just asking for snow again without a release, don't you?
I hope not.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Items ten through twelve are all in reference to the Sand Hill Trail vacation that we've been talking about. Number ten, the Lake County Engineer's Office, the county, Joga County, I know, I apologize, my apologies.
Sorry, autopilot.
Yes, you say it so many times, sometimes it becomes second nature after twenty years. The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution number twenty-five dash zero eight zero, amended resolution to declare the public road right of way upon Sand Hill Trail, T.R. zero seven five three, in Monson Township, Joga County, Ohio, to be vacated pursuant to O.R.C. five-five-three point zero four five, in order to correct the acreage amount of the vacated Sand Hill Trail listed in the board's original resolution, number two-five-zero-six-nine, passed on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Do you just want to go through the, the next ones then, too?
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute the vacation plan for Sand Hill Trail, T.R. zero seven three five, sixty feet wide, located in Lot Three, Track Three, in Monson Township, Joga County, Ohio. And number twelve, the county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute the quitclaim deeds to Mathias A. Lee and Jessica S. Lee for property acreage from the vacated Sand Hill Trail, T.R. zero seven five three, as follows. V.A. one for zero point one four one acres, V.A. two for zero point one four one acres, V.A. three for zero point one three four acres, V.A. four for zero point one four nine acres, V.A. five for zero point one six five acres, V.A. six for zero point one four nine acres, V.A. seven for zero point zero six six acres, V.A. eight for zero point zero six six acres, V.A. nine for zero point zero six six acres, V.A. ten for zero point zero nine four acres, V.A. eleven for zero point one three seven acres, V.A. twelve for zero point one three two acres, V.A. thirteen for zero point one three zero acres, V.A. fourteen for zero point one two nine acres, V.A. fifteen for zero point one two zero acres, V.A. sixteen for zero point one zero three acres, V.A. seventeen for zero point one one acres, located in Monson Township.
So who collects the one dollar consideration for the? Does that actually get collected, or I assume not, right? All right, does anyone have any questions on these before we?
No.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve ten, eleven, and twelve.
Second.
That would be second.
Or second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nick Gores, Water Resources. Item thirteen on the agenda is requesting the board approve and execute a contract maintenance form number one, increasing the service contract with Bill Conti Plumbing LLC for additional backflow testing and plumbing services as needed in twenty-twenty-five in the amount of four thousand for a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Item fourteen on the agenda is requesting the board approve and authorize Ralph Bittler, authorized representative to execute the delegation of authority letter for the Ohio Water Development Authority Loan Number one-one-two-one-seven for the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project, giving authority to Director Nick Gores, myself, to request payment instruction forms for the project, now being sent via DocuSign email. Originally, the request, since they switched this, was for to get a, a text sent to or a call to Ralph. When I called to give them the phone number, she started to explain to me that, well, he's going to need to know, make sure he has the ACH form for this contractor, has this, has all this data, and I went, you're not, Ralph's not going to have this data, so she said, well, we can do a delegation of authority letter, so this way in the office, we can handle all the addressing, Kathleen and I can make sure that, and it's just really sets up the payment information for the project, and then from there on out, it's all back to paper, so.
I'll make a motion to approve fourteen.
Second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Should I break in?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Charles Teckent, Maintenance Department. I have two items on the agenda today, items number fifteen and sixteen. Both are parking lot related. The first one is for the office building here to expand the parking lot, and so it's, the Maintenance Department is requesting the board acknowledge the statement of qualifications on file for professional design and contract administration, including Verdantis LLC, SME, and Smolten Engineering, and select Verdantis LLC as the most qualified firm in accordance with O.R.C. one fifty-three point six-nine A for the parking lot expansion at the Joga County Office Building, and further authors, further authorize the department to begin contract negotiations in accordance with O.R.C. one fifty-three point six-nine B.
So where would this expansion be? Can you like describe the project a little more?
Yeah, it's on the west side of the building, right next to where the B.M.V. is. There's a, there's a small parking lot there on the side.
Oh, right, right.
We'll expand that over toward the two wells that are there.
Okay. And do we know, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask what the predicted cost of the project is.
So we won't know till the engineering is done, but.
Give us a range.
Yeah, our ballpark.
Just to give us a heart attack.
Our ballpark is around two-fifty to three-fifty for the parking lot, and of course, the engineering services will be around thirty-five K. Uh, there's quite a bit of fieldwork that needs to be done, which is why we're leaning on the high side, closer to three-fifty.
And if, if you can see, this apron is already designed to expand the parking lot when we built this.
Yes.
There's a concrete pad that enters into that.
Yes.
Huge of a parking lot.
Yes. But there's a good deal of fieldwork, and of course, the, the draining has to all drain down to the side, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty concerned once the Board of Elections is here, where is everyone going to park, particularly, you know, we have a presidential election and there's early voting, I mean, I don't, you don't know what the future's going to hold, but certainly this past presidential election, a lot of people were partaking in early voting, and it feels like we don't have the current capacity right now with the parking lot to handle that.
And this will also include for the B.M.V., I mean, a, I guess, a driver's test course?
Oh.
Yeah, maneuverability course.
No kidding? All right, that's exciting. So I'll make a motion to approve fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Should I break in? Aye.
Yes.
Okay, and then the second item on the agenda is for the Safety Center Parking Lot. We started the engineering back in early January, actually, it was late December, and we have the engineering done now, and so this is an update and a, kind of a transparency as to where we are after all the engineering is done. I did provide some drawings and some copies here, and also an estimate. So when we originally estimated this parking lot, we said it would be between four hundred and five hundred K. That did not include any subbase work, it also did not include any drainage work, and we had estimated that if that needed to be repaired, it would be another two hundred to three hundred thousand. I did put a little spreadsheet together that showed where we've started at, and then after the designs were done, where we ended up at a million dollars now. The main changes are the drainage work, there's a considerable amount of drainage work that needs to be redone, there's four sections of the pipe that is flowing in the wrong direction, thirteen sections overall need to be replaced due to damage and, and leaks, and then eight catch basins also need to be replaced. Just for the drainage repairs alone, we're looking at about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars just to repair the drainage. That's about fifty-six percent of the drainage sections that need to be replaced, so they are in poor, poor repair and won't last the next twenty years if you spend the money on a parking lot. Also too, the second drawing that I, I shared was also the areas where the subbase is unstable and needs to be replaced, and you'll see that. That's going to require the, the actual excavation of the subbase and, and, and repair, and it's also going to require the removal of portions of the sidewalk and so forth, because those are also being damaged as well as it settles. So you're looking at about fifty-two thousand dollars for the additional subgrade and base work, and then the sidewalk and curb replacement is an additional forty-two thousand dollars. And I do have some of the amounts there that need to be replaced as well. So with that, it looks like if you add those in, we are upwards of almost one million dollars.
Let me remind you, last year we were asked to request capital bill funds for this, and we did receive some. And I believe we've already got that?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
It's already here, you know, in our comp.
That's great. Is there any change in design to the parking lot, other than, I mean, I understand the drainage issues that could be repaired?
Right, the only additional change is we're, on the back end, where the deputies park, we're expanding that parking so they have more areas to park.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering, is to what extent we need to think about, I mean, if we're dumping all this money already, we need to be thinking for the future at all.
So with that, item sixteen then is, the Maintenance Department is, is requesting the board discuss, review, and approve the proposed concept design for upgrading the Safety Center Parking Lot, as the engineering estimate of construction cost is approximately one million dollars. So we have not moved on to the final design, we're waiting for, you know, to ensure that everybody's comfortable with this concept design.
I'll make a motion to approve sixteen.
Second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Should I break in?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the details.
Sure.
Much appreciated.
It was good, good to have you provided on this.
Very detailed.
Yeah, I like it, I like that.
Yeah, I know Senator O'Brien helped us with the money from the state for that project and the road, I think. But is it just the parking?
No, just the parking work.
Okay.
We're still working on the road.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Christine.
Hi, Christine Lomia, Executive Corrector of the Joga Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services.
I don't know if you want to talk about ours?
Well, it's, it's Region thirteen, it consists of, it consists of Lake, Joga, Asterville, and Portage, that's the region, our four counties, there's nineteen regions in the state of Ohio, and the first wave of money from Region thirteen is just being distributed a little bit before, but like right now, but Region thirteen's received like two hundred and three, two-point-three million dollars, and periodically, there's three, there's three representatives from each county, and I represent the Commissioner's Office, and Sheriff Felderman represents the incorporated areas, where I have to reach out to all the villages and the cities for his support, you know, for them to stay on there. And then we had a meeting with the Township Association for the non-incorporated areas, and the Township Association had a little election, and Christina Lomia won the election. So I'm going to read number seventeen, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution twenty-five dash oh eight one, appointing Christina Lomia as Region thirteen unincorporated representative, member to the Ohio, One Ohio Governance Board for a three-year term ending March twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Should I break in? Mr. Spiller?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I was just wondering if I could follow up on some of the conversation that you had with Lake Joga Recovery Centers, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So we're in the middle of our RFP process, we provide funding to seven organizations in Joga County, and then we provide also grant funding to a few others. So we provide the funding through a fiscal year, so it's July one through June thirtieth. I know it gets confusing because the county budget is on a calendar year, we're required to do the state fiscal year. So we recently received about five million dollars in requests, and we are going through the RFP process to see what it is that we can. and we are going through the RFP process to see what it is that we can currently fund, what we can afford to fund. Although this, the partnership with the county and our board is wonderful, I see, you know, that you fund a lot of things at the jail. We also fund a lot of the things at the jail and other, I think some of the funding is braided. I'm, you know, starting to really discover that. We also fund the Lake Joga Recovery Center Jail Treatment Program for about seventy-two thousand dollars a year, and provide other services through Ravenwood Health and Family Pride. The medication-assisted treatment, I'm very concerned with. This year, as Melanie was talking, the state decided to do the funding a little bit different. The funding used to come through the Board, about one point two million per year. The agencies in the Board would collaborate and decide where the funding needed to go and to best produce, you know, outcomes. This year, what happened is anyone could apply directly for the funding, it didn't come through the Board, and so the agencies kind of applied, they then got about half of what they asked for. Our overdose deaths right now are zero, and they continue to decrease in the last five years. My concern with...
You mean this year, zero this year?
Yeah, for 2025, currently we have zero overdose deaths in Geogee County. And so, you know, looking at some of the opportunity, as I hear Commissioner that there's funding at the Prosecutor's Office, I would love to be able to offer my assistance because obviously, the Board is collaborating with the organizations, we're developing programs that may, you know, qualify for that funding. I also wanna make sure that we don't have duplication of services or funding. So if I would be allowed to be in some of those conversations to give my expertise, I would think that that would be beneficial to the taxpayers in the county as well.
I was gonna say, absolutely, and I was kinda thinking that already, just seeing you in the audience. If, you know, if we have this half a million dollars, or no, how much do we have in funding?
Us, five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that right? Okay, so, I mean, we should have a plan, I mean, we shouldn't just be like collecting interest on that. We should have a plan to distribute that to people that need those services, and, you know, I think you're a good partner in figuring out who does, you know, need those resources to reach the people that are, you know, struggling with these addictions in our county.
And some, as I said, I was just looking at this yesterday, you know, the overdose deaths, at 2021, there were nineteen in Geogee County. We continue to decrease those and to have zero right now, but then to look at some of the funding that isn't coming through, I, especially for medication-assisted treatment and some of the other things that we have funded in the past, if there's a way that we could, even before July one, obviously, the Board, my Board of Directors, that they're going to be voting on the RFPs next month. And so we're, you know, staff is going through all of those documents and programs. We do not only financial audits for every single program that we fund, but we also do clinical audits, making sure that the outcomes, you know, are positive, that the program is still being effective in the county. So we have all of that data for every program that we fund. So I'd be happy to also share any information that you, it would be helpful for you as well. I could see us partnering on other programs too in the county to help like brain funding in the future, if that's something that the Board is interested in.
Yeah, I certainly am. And when you said you're concerned about the medication-assisted treatment, you're just concerned about that it's not gonna be funded, not that you're concerned about the effectiveness?
Exactly, thank you.
When you started to say that, I was like, oh no, we just gave you the money.
I'm concerned that the funding has gone away, and that, you know, it has shown to be effective in our community.
Okay, very good, yeah, I think everything you said has value, and, you know, these are valid points that you're making, so let's figure out a way to, you know, distribute this money.
Yeah, I think collaboration is a great, great way to do it, because we don't know your day-to-day process, and we do not wanna duplicate services, and you mentioned that the state is basically almost giving fifty percent to the mental health boards, and then everybody else is applying directly to the state?
No, so for those specific funds that used to come through mental health boards, now it doesn't. So any agency could apply for funding, and that's what they did this year. So in Geogee County, it was only agencies who had received funding in the past, but a lot of other counties, there were organizations who had never received funding, and then they were given funding, and it really wasn't, some of it wasn't in the continuum of care for that county, where it may have been an organization that the Board hadn't had a relationship with and didn't know what they were doing, but the funding did go to those agencies as well.
And the biggest surprise for your Board was, how did or why did these other agencies receive money from the state, and you guys worked in the process?
Yes.
Well, we'll work on that.
Well, I wanna say too, I really appreciate the opportunity to serve on the One Ohio Board, so I hope that I can be of benefit to that Board.
I know you'll add value, so I'm glad to have you on the, you know, the Joga Representatives for Region thirteen.
Thank you, thanks for coming in, Christine.
Number eighteen, "The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute a letter to Representative David Joyce requesting support for fiscal year 2026 community project funding to assist with the Geogee County Safety Center roof replacement." This is an issue where we were asked to apply for some federal funding through Dave Joyce's office for a couple of projects, and I worked with Chuck on this roof one, and then I worked with Nick to ask for more funds for McFarland. And so this particular, well, both of them require letters of support from different agencies. Nick already had them from prior times when we had asked for federal funding toward the McFarland project, but we did not have letters in support of this project. The project's gonna cost one point five million dollars, and we are asking for half of that, seven hundred and fifty thousand. You look, you try, you say, we're making the effort, and they'll either fund it or they won't, but you don't have it if you don't ask, so we're asking. So we had solicited, actually, the Sheriff's Office has been helping me get these letters, and this would be one for you as a Board, a support of funding for the roof replacement.
Yeah, and because the center does house ICE detainees, I think there is an argument for why federal funds should be used for this.
There has to be a federal nexus, and that's what we used as that, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve this letter.
Second.
Mr. Breaken.
Hi.
Yes.
Thank you. Christine, do you wanna talk about this next one? I think you've had a little more involvement in this than I have.
As we know, we received a letter from Norfolk Southern Corporation with an intent to abandon their railway in Portage, Joga, and Ohio counties. This is the section four, Solon to Aurora, in Geogee County's portion. They sent a letter looking for a response from the county. We received responses back from Engineers Office, Planning Commission, and Water Resources with some concerns, some demographic information, and some requests for information from the Engineers Office based on some of the concerns that they are seeing with the abandonment and how it affects them roadway-wise. So what we're asking you to do is send a response back to Mr. Plum at Norfolk that would include the responses from those three entities to be as part of response to get the additional information that they're looking for. They did send a additional letter, and the Engineers Office did respond back to that as well. So there's two separate responses from the Engineers Office, one from Planning and Water Resources. Nick isn't here anymore, but his concern was water and sewer.
There's a movement that goes under this that we had to make sure they're aware of and are mindful of as we go through this process. So this is just a very simple cover letter where we acknowledge that we received these communications, and here's what we gathered to give back to the railroad. So that's what this particular item is about.
I also am very excited about this rail trail line that they're supposed to put in after this is abandoned. It will be a trail sort of similar to the Maple Highlands, is my understanding, that will extend through several counties, and Solon Mayor Ed Kraus has been kind of the driving force behind it, but I think it will be a real asset to our county and the surrounding counties if it's put in, so.
Yes, it would complete the loop with the counties, with the three counties.
"The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board acknowledge the letters received..." Should this say March nineteenth? The letter, you told me we received it.
No, it was March tenth. The letter is dated February seventeenth, but we didn't get it until March then. And then the second one is...
The letters received March tenth and April seventeenth from Norfolk Southern Corporation regarding abandonment of its railroad line from Solon to Aurora, Ohio, and further approve and execute a letter of response that includes information and requests from the County Engineers Office, the Planning Commission, and the Department of Water Resources.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Breaken.
Hi.
Mr. Breaken.
Yes.
They anticipate to file in the beginning of May for the abandonment. There will be an abandonment process that we will have to... They are planning to file for the abandonment in the beginning of May, and then there's a process that has to be followed for that abandonment.
Is there like a hearing, or all kinds of this?
Notice. We had to go through the same process, my understanding was for the Maple Highlands Trail.
Yes.
When that happened, so.
We do have a railroad area of sixty foot wide behind Post Two on Route eighty-seven, and I'm wondering if we could start doing a little bit of research, and is it the same Norfolk Southern Corporation? Or is it another, because if that's the trend, and if it's the same railroad company, I'd like to start a conversation with them to abandon that for Post Two behind the property, so.
I would say a conversation with Mr. Rosner in the Engineers Office, the Tax Map Department would be a good place to start with that, because there has been some talks about that property in that area regarding the roadways that are over there. So there's been conversation about it.
Because I think it's been dormant for fifty years or more, that little stretch.
Well, if you look at the map, Colony Lane is actually part of that.
Right, you're exactly right.
And then it crosses eighty-seven, and then it kind of falls onto the property the other way, but they use Colony Lane as the, the old railway.
Because if we're cleaning up some areas, I, you know, wanna start a conversation in that direction.
True.
So, thank you.
Item twenty, "The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board amend the motion from April eighth, 2025, to revise the start date to read 'Approve Hiring and Appointment of Amy B. Van to the Position of County Administrator, Number 1301, to be effective May nineteenth, 2025, at the rate of sixty dollars and forty-six cents per hour, Grade E, nineteen, Step Nine.' We fully believe she's coming. She's just working her way through her retirement from her current position, and this is our latest and best estimate of when she will be able to join us."
I feel like you should get a vote on this one. I'll make a motion to approve twenty.
Second.
Mr. Breaken.
Aye.
Mr. Breaken.
Aye.
Mr. Breaken.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frank Inzunici, ADP. Let me start off, this is a tad unprecedented, and I've only given you a few days' notice. I wanna thank Linda and Christine for helping to expedite this to get it on the agenda. ADP, through one of our own county offices, was notified, middle of the day on Thursday of last week, on a very suspicious phishing email we received from Burton Township. We reviewed that, went through it, determined it was legitimately a phishing attack. We reached out to Burton Township. They were not aware at that point, but then became aware through some of their other contacts that they have a serious incident on their hands. We don't have a current services agreement with them, so we could not provide any direct services, but we did provide some advising, we did go out to Burton Township on Friday, met with their fiscal officer, and basically sort of looked over the issues. Ultimately, they had a very serious incident occur, one that we had yet to see yet, was actually very sophisticated by attackers who knew what they were doing and did a lot of significant social engineering on the background of that email. It was actually very impressive, but we were very fortunate that one of our users notified us and phished that properly. At that point then, we had been talking to the fiscal officer, I mean, one of the trustees, where they scheduled an emergency meeting for last night. A group of us went out to Burton Township, we met with them, we went over sort of what we experienced in terms of the incident, and then also, if they want to have ADP provide services at this point, I think their words were they're sort of dead in the water in terms of communication right now, because their email account is totally compromised. So we had that discussion last night. Now, whether they'll go with ADP services in the future, I don't know. They have other meetings, I think they've scheduled another special meeting to discuss that potentially tomorrow night. So all we're doing is getting our advanced work done, and based on, and again, I'll go back, like you talked about, Charlotte Township, based on the action that this Board took last year for ADP to enter into any agreements with these entities, we first need a valid resolution from the County Commissioners permitting us to even negotiate with them at that point. So what I'm asking for today is just that the County Commissioners pass the standard resolution, which that allows us to potentially negotiate with Burton Township. Again, I don't know if they're going to do this or not, we just want to give them that option.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve twenty-one.
Second.
Mr. Breaken.
Aye.
Mr. Breaken.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, and again, ladies, thank you for expediting that, I very much appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna get in front of some of these other townships, because it does seem like they don't move on these issues of cybersecurity until there is an emergency, and so it would be, it would be good to get ahead, so we're not, you know, in nine-one-one mode and are being more proactive about making sure they're protecting their information.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, it was quite a stressful weekend going through this, even though it didn't affect us necessarily, it's a township in Geogee County that, you know, we all serve and work with, and, I mean, I just feel really bad for their fiscal officer. She is incredibly overwhelmed by this, it's really hit her in terms of work. So to your point, Commissioner, I do think that there's a lot of value, especially in terms of the eastern townships. I think that, you know, they look at their budgets and think, well, our budget's two million, two point five million, who wants that? Turns out, a lot of people do want that because the barrier for entry is so low.
Yeah.
So yeah, I would absolutely agree with you.
Okay.
Thank you again.
We have a couple items on for Board Discussion this week. The first one, maybe he would like to address, Commissioner Breaken.
Yeah, so we received, I'm sure you gentlemen saw, an email from a resident last, last week, end of last week, with a complaint regarding Geogee Public Health's Operation and Maintenance Septic Program. I'm sure, you know, you guys probably are aware of the program, but it's mandated by state law that was passed in 2015, I believe, that the Health Department is now getting pressured by the state to implement. Essentially, you need a permit to operate your septic system. There are three thousand septic systems in this county, and it's, you know, it's essentially a tax on owning a septic system. I mean, that being said, I certainly think that there is a legitimate public interest in maintaining the quality of our drinking water in the county, but this program really has no benefit, in my opinion, to those property owners who are already doing what they're supposed to do for their, their septic system. It really is just a tax. So anyway, we had, we had received that email. I know there's been a lot of news stories and so forth as well, where people are quite upset about this program. But, you know, in, in Geogee Public Health's defense, they really are just implementing state law, they're trying to do it as inexpensively as possible and as, with the least amount of burden to the residents, but they, you know, there still is cost and there still is... But they, you know, there still is cost, and there still is burden to residents. So the resident ended the email by saying, what are you guys going to do about it? And I thought, you know, that's, that's a fair question. So my suggestion was that perhaps we send a letter to our state legislators and just let them know that this law has been harmful to our residents and ask them to change the law to, to remove some of these restrictions. So before I wrote anything, I just wanted to get a pulse from you two gentlemen, and then I can take steps further if you're so inclined.
Well, I did respond to two emails. And my first comment was that Board of Health is separate from the county commissioners and not under our hiring authority. And gave them a little rendition of when I was a Realtor, so, and so forth. But I agree with researching this and send a letter to our legislators because, yes, it is hurting our residents, and it's a form of a tax. But there's a lot of people that have septic systems in the county and that'd be impactful for them. So I'm in favor of writing a letter to our state legislators. And that's, and that's exactly how I ended up my email to them, was contact your state legislators because, again, they're not under our hiring authority.
Right, and I mean, and even still, I mean, Geogga Public Health is only implementing the law. So the way to change this is to change the law.
And I wish Adam was here today to...
He's, unfortunately, I asked him to come, he is at a Health Commissioner Conference right now. So I did ask him to come, but I'm sure I will have him proofread any letter we sent out to make sure that we are, we are accurately portraying the situation.
The thing that's ironic about the current law, this affects me personally. Now, I live in Lake County, so I pay more than the people in Geogga County pay, but my septic system's only six years old. And the ironic thing is, the people with the newest systems pay the most. And the people, oh yeah, I have to buy an MPDES every year.
Well, it depends on your system. It's because you have an MPDES system.
Yes.
So it's not, but it's not based on your age, it's based on the type of system you have.
Yeah, and I have to have a contract, and I have to prove I have a contract. It's renewed every year, that's like two hundred and fifty bucks. The fee is a hundred and seventy-five every year for the MPDES thing. So it's ironic to me that the people who pay the most have the newest systems offered.
But that is just because of your type. Because like I have a new system too, but I don't have that type of system. So my fee's going to be lower. Those, those systems, like when you install it, you actually sign a contract with the EPA saying you're going to have a yearly inspection. Anyway, we don't need to get in the weeds about that, but there is an Ohio EPA aspect to this as well, even if we got over the state issue.
It'll be interesting to see what we think we should be asking them to do, what we should be asking them to change in the law.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of a general ask of, hey, can you, can you look at this? Because at this point, I do think it's, it's an over-inclusive system that really is penalizing the property owners who are already maintaining their system. If you're maintaining your system, your neighbors are maintaining your system. There's really nothing to gain for this. Now, if your neighbors are polluting the water, this is a way for them to get, to get caught up. But you can, that can also happen through the complaint process that existed in law already.
Commissioner, what happens if a septic, you may know this from having Dan on the Health Board, what happens if a septic system fails the inspection and the person cannot afford to fix it?
So there is, there are grant dollars, state grant dollars available to those folks, and, but it's not a big pile of money. So that's, I mean, that's a major concern.
It's an issue.
Because, I mean, what, what my concern is, I mean, I'm always thinking about, you know, like our seniors in our community, our veterans, like the people that are living paycheck to paycheck. And, you know, those people may not be able to afford putting in a new system if their system fails. And there may not be enough grant dollars available for all these people. So I, I don't want something that's kicking people out of their homes unnecessarily just because of a kind of a burdensome state law.
Okay. The other thing that we had on for discussion today, kind of harks back to the YouTube recordings. We did in the past week finally find the old equipment and the old credentials for the...
Where'd you guys find it?
It was in a drawer in my office, but I apparently had never opened it. I opened the door, and I'm like, what is all this? And she comes in and she goes, that's it, we've been looking all over for this stuff. So we had Carrie from the front desk log into the old YouTube program, the thing that we had, and it was still active. And so we had a quick conversation with Frank in which he indicated that it would be very easy for them to take the recordings of the meetings that we have, that they are creating, and put them onto our YouTube channel. So I think that if you would just let him know if that's what you want to do, we can move forward with that. But the other question that came up, which I do need to hear from you guys on, is the issue of comments being made during live streams. My understanding is, and you guys will correct me if I misunderstand, but my understanding is that currently, people who are watching the live stream of this meeting have a means by which they can comment on that. And those comments are coming to the ADP folks who are then forwarding them to us. It's also my understanding that we don't have to allow comments if we don't want to. And so I'm just asking you, do you want to continue? Is that correct? You can not allow comments if the Board does not want that?
Our understanding within the YouTube account itself is that we can allow or not allow comments in terms of the mechanics of it. Under the current setup, because they've already been allowed and every other Board allows them that uses the site, I'm not sure in terms of legally if we can then remove them once they've already been permitted. So we need, we need, mechanically, yes, but in terms of legally, I don't know if we've already created that venue, whether or not we can do that. That'd be a discussion for the Prosecutor's Office, I think.
Okay.
Well, is there any, I mean, is there any appetite to close comments?
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, because there, there isn't for me. I mean, I think that's, folks should have their First Amendment right of free speech, and that is not about complimenting us. I mean, that's nice. Like, if people want to compliment us, that's great. But, I mean, First Amendment is really about criticizing your government, and I think there should be more opportunities for that, not less.
Okay, so this is not an issue? Just needed to clarify that with you. And that was all we had for discussion this week.
Thank you, Linda. Anything? We'll go move into public comments? Adjournment?
Sorry, I'm still...
No, no public comment, we'll go right in. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a lot of things to say.
I know.